I would like to call the Human Resources Committee to order. It is now 5:36 on July 16, 2018. We are at Nashua High North.
We have real call, please.
Okay. Ms. Timmons?
Here.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Here.
Mrs. Porter is here. Mr. Mosher is not here. Ms. O'Gara?
Here.
Mrs. Oden. We also have Mrs. Oden, Mrs. Ho Hensie, Mr. Guarino, and Mr. Kaufman.
Thank you. On the agenda, we have two items of administrative interviews. Actually, it's three. And the first one we would be moving forward is the candidate for Assistant Principal for Nashua High North. Mr. Whitehead, can you come forward, please? Could you? Yes. Sit in front of the microphone.
Sitting in the chair with him. And you have to turn it on when to speak? Just push the button.
The little green button there. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Mr. Whitehead, can you give us a little summary about yourself? Can you tell us a little bit about yourself?
Absolutely. So, I began my educational career as a substitute teacher in Boston. I also was a part of the GARA program, which we prepared students for the MCAS and also college preparation. From there, I applied for assistant teaching position at Lawrence. Ended up getting a lead teaching position instead. I was at the middle school for six years and then graduated to the high school. And I've been at the high school for six years as well. Four years as an ESL teacher. I got my master's in ESL during that time at the middle school. And then after four years of that, I got my CAGS in school administration. And so I've been two years as a Dina student.
All right. Thank you. Do we have any questions for Mr. Whitehead? Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. Hi, Mr. Whitehead.
Hello.
I am curious. You know, we're told that we should be looking at data. We should be collecting data and analyzing it and using it to make more informed choices about our students' education. So I'm curious if you could speak to how you have used data to inform instruction? And then how would you use data, knowing what you know? What might you do differently or expand? Or I'm just curious your opinion on that.
Right. So data is, as you said, is very important to inform instruction and to improve. And so my past and history in regards to that is we set up a program at the current school that I'm at where we do two-week cycles. And basically, within those two weeks, there's a series of lessons. And then at the end, there's an assessment. And then we gather the data from that assessment to make adjustments or re-track and re-teach the information, or we move forward and we add more information. So data has definitely been a part of what I've done. And coming into the school would be something that is very important to what we do here.
So what you just spoke about was in the context of you teaching as an ESL teacher? You were doing that? Or is that an administrative oversight of a grade level or a department? Or how might that work?
Right. So part of my role as a Dina student was also ESL dean as well. So it would be a part of that cohort, that team of ESL teachers and basically collecting that data. We would have data meetings. So after those two weeks would be done, we would look at the data to inform our instruction.
Well, I hope you can bring some of that to the high school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. Anyone else? Ms. Oden?
Father, she's on the committee.
I didn't see you. I'm sorry. Ms. Van Twyver?
Thank you. We have experienced in this district with our reading and writing and math skills dropping every year. Doesn't matter. Doesn't seem to matter what we do to bring them back up. Have you experienced that yourself in Lawrence? And you have the MCAS, I guess. And you were on, not the S-BAC, but the other group, I think.
Park.
Can you? Excuse me? The park? The park. Could you talk to that a little bit for me?
Okay. So one of the ways that we were able to improve our areas of reading and math is we incorporated reading in every subject. So basically, even in art class, you know, oftentimes you think art just, you know. But we made sure that in every class, including the art, a class like arts, that they were doing reading, doing, you know, taking notes, annotating in there. So incorporating reading, writing, listening, and speaking in all the different areas. Even in gym, you know, we would have, the gym teacher would have a curriculum and have information. So that's one of the ways that we were able to improve in those areas.
For how long were you doing this? And did you see a rise in scores?
Absolutely. So we've done that for the last six years. And we were a Level V school. Part of the Lawrence School District was taken over by the state. And we went from a Level V across the district to a Level I school. And part of that was making sure that in every subject, there was that reading, writing, listening, and speaking and holding teachers accountable to that. We found that growth.
Well, that's rather impressive. You went from a four to a one school? That's rather impressive. Six years, though, is a long time.
Yes.
Yeah, it is. Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Oden?
Thank you, and welcome.
Thank you.
Mr. Whitehead. I'm sure you've been asked this before, but just as a committee here, when you go into a classroom, you'll be doing observations and evaluations. What do you look for?
Okay. So one of the most important things that I look for is even before I even get into the classroom, we, at the current school that I'm at, we check lesson plans. We want to make sure that the lessons are thoroughly planned out, making sure ESL and special education accommodations are considered even before the lesson. And then going into the classroom, looking for objectives, making sure that students know exactly where the teacher's taking them. And then beginning with the class with a launch or a do-now that, you know, gets the kids, the students engaged in the material and then guided practice throughout the lesson. Also checking for understanding, making sure the students understand the information because if moving forward without checking the understanding, we often lose students. And also collaboration, making sure in the classroom that there's opportunities to think, write, share, or turn and talk so that students can collaborate with one another. And then at the closure, you know, you can't just start the plan. You have to be able to land it as well. So hopefully, there's a closure at the end of the lesson. And then also opportunity, if there's going to be homework, for students to either begin their homework or ask any questions so that when they get home, they'll feel confident that they can complete it.
All right. Thank you.
Can I have a follow-up?
Yes, follow-up.
Can I ask you, in your present school district, do you use many observations or do you go in for a full class?
Good question. So we also, we do many observations as well. We do a full observation, but also many. So we really try to, we call it chunking. We tell the students to chunk the text, but we also chunk our evaluation. So, you know, going in the beginning and targeting the launch or the do-now. And then, you know, after evaluating that, going back in and seeing how improvements were made in that particular area. And then, and then moving forward within the lesson and kind of circling back to make sure that sometimes you go and you see great things and then you circle back around. And then, you know, people kind of lose focus. So we try to circle back around and help them to stay on task.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions? Ms. Porter?
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm very happy to see your background in teaching English as a second language. You not only have certification and a master's, but you have experience. How do you see that impacting your new position?
Well, definitely, it's something that I'm sensitive to. When I began at Lawrence, I was a little intimidated because it's almost 90% Spanish speakers. So I didn't speak any Spanish at the time. I knew "hola." That was about it. That's all that I knew. And students would come into my class often. Oftentimes, I really didn't know how to modify the text for them. And so that's why I went and got my master's, because I wanted to make sure that I could really support, support the students. And it was very helpful doing so. And hopefully, even coming here, I know there are English language learners and there are students from various different backgrounds. And I believe that my experience in that will help with the diversity that is here at this school. Yes.
Thank you. Yes, a follow-up.
And to kind of piggyback on Mrs. Oden, in evaluations, not necessarily evaluations, but supporting teachers and how they can help English language learners, do you see that as part of your role?
Absolutely. And even evaluations, I think of evaluations as professional development. And so, you know, hopefully, my experience, I'll be able to help provide professional development, not only observing or evaluating, but providing growth for teachers in those areas, but other areas as well.
Ms. Van Twyver?
I'd like to know if you've had an experience with a difficult teacher and how you handled it?
Yes. I've had experience with challenging teachers. And a lot of it oftentimes is with students. And sometimes, you know, as a Dina student, there are challenges when it comes to, you know, teachers want you to be, to be hard or soft and somewhere in the middle. And I really try to communicate well with teachers. And oftentimes, when they're kind of in disagreement or they have some questions, I always try to not only email them and follow up with them, but at the end of the day, have that personal conversation with them to make sure that if there's any questions they may have that we can resolve them.
I'd also like to ask about behavior. What's your philosophy with students on behavior?
Well, for me, one of the most important things in my role as a Dina student was communication and really being a good listener. Because sometimes students come in and, you know, they're, they have certain behaviors that they're showing, but it really stems from something that may be going on at home. And I really try to listen to them and really understand what's going on. And then if they really need their counseling, I really pass them over to the counselor or pass them over to a teacher that I have a great relationship with. So my philosophy is really, you know, communication and really listening because, you know, sometimes they'll open up if you're a listener and you're not quick to judge them or be overly aggressive towards them.
Have you ever had to request that a student be kicked out of school?
Kicked out of school for suspension or for...
Either one, suspension or for really something serious.
Yes. Unfortunately, we've had students that have been suspended. And we haven't expelled any students. I haven't had to do that. But there had been, unfortunately, some occasions where some students had to be suspended.
Thank you, Mr. Whitehead.
No problem.
Okay. Those who haven't spoken yet, Ms. Ho Hensie?
Thank you. Welcome to our district.
Thank you.
And I see you've met part of our team. I just wondered, this is an easy question. What do you like from your vantage point at this point of our district as compared to where you've been before? What do you see as our positives, our strengths?
Well, I say, one of the strengths is the diversity. I've come from a district where it's 90% Latino. And I think there's strength in different cultures and different types of people. And I'm excited to work with this diverse, diversity.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
Mr. Guarino, do you have anything to, any questions? Okay. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. Mrs. Oden alluded to homework. And I'm curious, up the road, it's made some news where the Merrimack School District doesn't require grading homework, where they in fact don't even check to see if homework's been completed. So I'm kind of curious what your opinion is on homework if, I'll just leave it, I'll keep it very open-ended.
Well, I see great value in homework. You know, I believe that, especially when you get to college, it's all homework. And so I believe if we're, especially at the high school level, if we're not preparing the students to do work at home, then we're not really preparing them for college where the majority of it's going to be in their dorm room or at the library where they're going to get their work done. So I believe that homework is very important.
Thank you. One other follow-up, if I may? Roughly, half our students go onto college. And we really don't have solid data on that. I've heard 44. I've heard 52. We're somewhere in the middle that go to, go on to college. So half of our students are not. We have 19 CTE programs. Can you, I mean, academics, college-bound is really oftentimes the focus in a high school. Can you see yourself, you know, adjusting to the fact that half our kids are not college-bound? They may very well be on some kind of technical track or some know what they're doing and a lot of kids don't. So can you see that, when you talk about diversity of population, we also have diversity of outcome when they graduate? I'm curious, have you had experience on the CTE side of things before?
Right. So, you know, I, one of the things that I had not experienced when I was in high school was the ability to go to a technical school. And I would like to have had that experience because I really believe that, as you alluded to, not everybody's going to go in to go to college. They may, even though college is valuable, and I have a lot of degrees, so I know how valuable it is. But I do believe that, you know, students need to have different opportunities to experience, whether it's automotive or cosmetology. So I definitely am one that would encourage the diversity that you're referring to, not only in terms of ethnic background, but also in terms of what students will do in the future.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
Do you have any other questions? If not, I move to, I move to accept Mr. Whitehead for Assistant Principal at Nashua High North.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much. You move on to the full board now. Mr. Lonigan? Thank you. Can you have a seat? Mr. Lonigan, once he's seated. You comfortable?
I am, thank you.
Good. Okay. Can you tell us a little bit about yourself, please?
Absolutely. I'm Jason Lonigan. I was born and raised in Laconia, New Hampshire. Started off my educational career here in Nashua. I worked in Nashua for 13 years, four of which I worked at Elm Street Middle School as a special educator, but also focused on at-risk students in the eighth grade. From there, I moved on to Nashua High South as a headmaster. Served in that role for one year, and the positions were changed over to Assistant Principals. I served four more years as an Assistant Principal at Nashua South before heading over to Penachuck Middle School, where I also served as an Assistant Principal, but for four years. From there, I went back to my alma mater, Laconia High School, and I am currently the Assistant Principal there and have been for two years.
All right. Thank you. Do you have any questions for Mr. Lonigan? Okay, Mr. Kaufman, you're on.
So I just want to tell the story for the people at home that might be watching and probably for the board. I first met Mr. Lonigan when I was a substitute teacher at Penachuck Middle School. So I just, so you never know, folks out there, how things turn around. I'm glad to see you back. I know the kids and myself had a great deal of respect for you when I was in Penachuck as a sub. And I'm thrilled that you've chosen to come back to us. I think it'll be fun for you to perhaps, I was thinking on the way over, will there be some overlap? I think you've got maybe a year or two's worth of kids that'll be in high school. So that'll be, that'll be kind of fun to see them again. And I know they'll remember you. I've got one young man who remembers me when I go to the Dunkin' Donuts window. And I'm just a substitute teacher. So, I mean, we have very little, you know, interaction that kids will have any reason to remember. So I'm thrilled to have you back. I'm sure you'll blend right in and really help the school get back to its former stride.
Well, I thank you for those comments. I am looking forward to working with the students that I had at Penachuck Middle School. I'm pretty sure I will have had all the classes that are here. So I do look forward to seeing those students once again and their families.
Any other questions? Ms. Oden?
I'm sorry. And welcome back, Mr. Lonigan. It's nice to see you back here. I have the same question for you that I had for Mr. Whitehead. You've been to Laconia. Do they use many observations or do they have full observations, evaluations?
They have their feet in a couple different buckets depending on where you're at. As far as when you came into the district, if you're a non-tenured teacher in Laconia, you do have formal observations with many observations. If you are a tenured teacher, they're still doing the more formal process of observations. I do have experience, obviously, in Nashua, using your rubrics and doing the many observations as well as formal observations. But it is a little different in Laconia.
And I'll ask you the same question. When you go into a classroom, what do you look for?
I think I'm looking for a few things when I walk into a classroom. Mr. Whitehead alluded to a few of those things. I'm looking for a well-organized, structured lesson with an agenda or objectives listed on the board, a do-now activity to get things started, and then engagement by the students in various activities to support whatever concepts they may be discussing or reviewing within the classroom. And then ending it with some sort of exit ticket, some sort of check for understanding. That way, the teacher can inform his or her instruction on the lesson and prepare for the next day.
Thank you.
Ms. Van Twyver?
I'd like to ask you if you got to evaluate Mr. Howard when you, Howard when you were there, but I won't ask you that question.
We don't evaluate subs.
Oh, they don't? Oh, okay. Well, anyways, once again, I'm going to ask you a question about data. What data points do you use to judge whether a child is reading at grade level in Laconia? And I'm very concerned, I've been on this board six years, and our grades, our test scores are going down, down, down. And I don't understand why. I just cannot figure out why because we spend so much money on education. So would you please address data and how you use it and what data points do you capture?
So in Laconia, I'm in more of a defined role, if you will, less so with the academic curriculum world. We have academic coordinators for teaching and learning that kind of drive that train. So I look at behavior data mostly in Laconia. But to get to your point about reading, writing, through my history here in Nashua, going from the BAM and the BAR assessments to help inform our instruction, prepare students for the kneecap, or then moving on to the I-ready scores that we were administering during my time here. I found those data points to be the most valuable, to be honest with you, the I-ready scores. I think it helped teachers inform their instruction. It also helped us place students into interventions to help support them, gain the skills that they need with reading, writing, or math. I think while I was at Penachuck, in many instances, we were able to get more than a year's growth in a year's teaching time due to the fact we were able to identify students and use this diagnostic approach with I-ready. So that's what we did, and those were my experiences.
The diagnostic approach, was it the tool that Kathy Wile developed that you used to pinpoint where a student wasn't grasping something?
I don't think it was something that Kathy, it was before Kathy's time when we were using the I-ready strictly through their computer program. You know, that we had some issues, I think, at first, that first year where, you know, we had kind of grouped our students and the scale had slid. The I-ready had changed the scale. But we continued on with them, and I think the data became more valuable and solid. But in regards to Kathy, I'm not sure if it was something she created or not.
Thank you.
I'd like to say something. I think the reason why our data, our reading skills are going down, 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 as Ms. Van Twyver has said, is because the dynamics have changed in the school system. There are more diversity in schools. They come in with a lot of different problems. We're not looking at the whole child. We're looking at reading, writing, arithmetic only. You cannot learn if you're hungry. And that's one of the reasons why test scores are going down and everything else is going down. The dynamics of our school population have changed tremendously in almost 30 years that I've been here. I really believe that. I don't have anything to back that up, Ms. Van Twyver, but from what I see is the case on all the committees that I've been on. And it appears that that's a big reason. You cannot learn if you're hungry. So. Any other question? Ms. Porter?
Welcome. It's nice to have you. I see that you have a strong background in special ed. And I'm just going to kind of ask the same question I asked of Mr. Whitehead. How do you, I think that's a really valuable perspective to bring. How do you see that helping you in your position?
I, you know, I like to connect with all sorts of students, inform relationships. I've developed a lot of relationships with kids in special education. And to be honest with you, I think that goes back to my mother and her work at the New Hampshire State School up in Laconia back when I was a youngster. I truly appreciate what those types of students bring to the table when sometimes others may not. And I'm not talking necessarily adults, but maybe the kids. I think it gives me another lens to look through when looking at situations, whether they involve some student in special education or they don't. I think it's a valuable lens to always be looking through. And I had great experiences with special education students here in Nashua, in Laconia where I currently am. There was a student that I had at Penachuck Middle School. By chance, I roll into Laconia. He's there. It's awesome, you know. So I, I think it's a valuable lens to have, and I oftentimes look through it when I'm, when I'm looking at different things.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with what Ms. Timmons said about what's happening in our schools. The population for ELL has grown substantially, and also our special ed population has grown substantially. So I'm not saying there's a direct correlation there, but it's, you know, if you look at the student population, it's very dynamic. Things are changing, as Ms. Timmons said. I look at, I believe in something called barriers to education, that students, when they come to school, as Ms. Timmons said, you know, that there's more kids with problems. And so I just wanted to get some sense of how you recognize these barriers to education with students. And I think what you said previously, your previous answer is very good, getting to know the students, et cetera, you know, working with them one-on-one like that, especially with the special ed. But what do you see as barriers to education and how do we overcome that for our students?
I think some barriers are more obvious than others depending on the student, to be quite honest with you. Some are, they're going to be right there for all of us to see, while others are going to be deep down inside. I think the biggest thing, going back to Ms. Timmons' point, is things have changed in the schools and the people within the schools have a different job, not only to educate students, but to be there and support them and break those barriers down. Trauma-informed care is a big thing that's happening in our state of New Hampshire. And it focuses in a lot about building relationships with students to hopefully, for those barriers that are deep down inside, to get those out of those particular students and put the supports in place to help them be successful, not only in school, but within the community and the home. There are a number of challenges facing all educators today, Board of Ed members. And all we can do is work as a team to try to identify those things. And remember, we're here to support the students. In my role, I will hope to be a lightning rod to help students that are in need of support. You know, I didn't grow up in the perfect, you know, home as well, and I have some experiences that I, you know, lived with that also give me another lens to help support students. But know that I'm here to do that, break those barriers down and support those students.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino. Ms. Ho Hensie?
Thank you. And welcome to our district. And we're coming back. I'm delighted that you're coming back. It says lot. My children went to Penachuck a little bit before you were there, but it was a wonderful, wonderful place. I'm just wondering, what do you see for high school students in general? I know you didn't do high school here, but you did it in Laconia as our discipline problems. What are our biggest things to focus on? What should we as a board understand about high school students and discipline?
The biggest thing that I've noticed over the past few years is, well, I'll just give you one example, jewels, vape stuff. Kids nowadays aren't going out on the corner and smoking cigarettes. They're using these electronic devices, and they're doing it on property. They're doing it within the classroom. That's one big thing as of late that has changed. From my time at South, it was more of the, you know, they're going to smoke. From my time at South, it was more of the, you know, they're going to smoke whatever, but now it's changed. So that's been an interesting shift in things. I think the biggest thing for discipline, discipline trends, I think is important to look at as a school, because I think it tells you a little bit about your climate or culture and your building. One thing that we do in Laconia is we do identify problem behaviors. We do use a PBIS multi-tiered intervention system, and we identify certain behaviors that we, as a school, want to focus in on and try to make some changes to. Those things change, though, and they change from month to month at times, they change from year to year. But I think it's important that we're looking at not only the reading and writing and math data, but we're looking at that data as well to kind of identify problem behaviors. And then as a group, not an individual, but as a group, coming up with a tactful approach in how we want to address that situation or those situations.
Okay, thank you.
Did we, Ms. Van Trever?
You brought up a question for me that I've been thinking about lately, and that's the school problems that we have with these kids who are mentally disturbed and go and kill. Did you have anything in Laconia that would observe certain students and keeping an eye on certain students that may potentially have that problem? Yeah.
That's a, not specifically, and that's a tough thing to do, unfortunately, and I'm sure other people feel this way. We're kind of in a reactive approach right now for many different reasons. You obviously don't want to discriminate or harass based on a gut feeling and things like that. So I think it's important that if you're identifying students with safety concerns, that there's a pattern of behavior that's going along with that, and that we've utilized the resources here within our school district to take a look at that and put supports in place to make that student, he or she, successful in the school, but not only the schools as they venture out to our community, career, college, whatever it may be. But to specifically be monitoring, no, unfortunately, it leads to some sort of threat online or in person, which tends to perk our interest. And maybe at times, that's too late, but unfortunately, in the positions we are, we have to take that information in, careful not to discriminate, you know, and make sure we're doing our due diligence to, A, make sure the threat's credible, or B, make sure it's not, and there's a lot of damage that goes to a person's psyche when they're being accused of things that they aren't necessarily doing. So making sure we're there to support that particular student if that's happening.
Well, I didn't mean to imply that there should be a list of people, but you know, I think that many of these incidences that we've had, somebody must have realized that there was something quite wrong with this child and could have stopped it. But I understand that there's, every one of these incidents, the child has been on some kind of psychotic drug. And that's been bothering me quite a bit because we have a lot of students, I don't know in our district how bad that is, that they're on prescribed psychotic drugs. And I'd like to look into that further because it just bothers me that these drugs may be giving out and not monitored as well as they should be. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Van Trever. Mr. Kaufman, one follow-up question, hope it's short. Thank you.
I don't know how he's going to answer it. It might be short. This is a question Ms. Luskey might remember or derivative. Cell phones, as I substitute up in Merrimack, kids, I mean, it's here, it's within that fingertip range, they can't possibly separate themselves from it. So is it a blessing? Is it a curse? How do we integrate the phone into the lesson plans so it becomes an asset rather than the distraction, which in my opinion, I believe it is most of the time?
I think the cellphone issue, like a lot of issues, comes down to the relationships you have with the students and whether or not they respect you. I've seen cell phones and technology utilized in a really good way when I was at Nashua High South, actually by Nick Audley, who's now an assistant principal at South. He did a great job at utilizing technology, and kind of his thought behind it was, it's there, it's always going to be there, I can make it a argument, a battle each day, or I can incorporate it and develop that, hey, we're going to do this now, I'm going to give you this, but you need to give me this in return. And it comes down to developing that relationship and that level of respect with students. Is it always going to be that way? No, because some students are going to have a bad day, and that's going to become the crux of why they want to get out of your class, and they did it in a tactful and on purpose, if you will. But cell phones, you know, you can flip a coin, one day I'm all for them, the next day I want to get rid of them all as well, but the fact is that they're here to stay, and we just need to figure out kind of good ways to incorporate them, implement them in our classrooms while building that level of respect.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, I move to accept Mr. Long again for assistant principal at Nashua High North.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, congratulations.
Thank you.
Move forward to the full board. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Can you tell us something about yourself?
Sure. So I'll start with my background. Twenty-five years ago, I started teaching at a school in Arlington, Massachusetts for behaviorally troubled students. I was the teacher and educational director at the school, and in that role, I taught classes as well as supervised and evaluated teachers. At that point in time, it was only one or two places in the country that had students with those types of acute behaviors. So I take a lot from that experience in terms of my current job. From there, I was lucky enough to be nominated to, by the superintendent at the Minuteman Career and Technical High School in Lexington, Mass., to be part of their program. And in that role, I was a social studies teacher, I was a special ed teacher, and I also worked as a liaison to the CTE areas, assisting special populations and special needs students to try to find the best CTE areas to provide them for the best pathway for success. I really love Minuteman, they had some great programs there, award-winning programs. However, I had a young family, I was living up here in New Hampshire, and I was lucky enough to be offered a job in Nashua. And I've been at South ever since for the past ten years, where I've worked as a social studies teacher, and currently I am the social studies head teacher.
Aye, thank you. Do we have any questions for Mr. McCocklin? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Holhensy?
Thank you. I'm just wondering, what type of experience do you have in CTE, and how will you make the bridge over to the department?
Great. So I, at Minuteman, I was there for ten years, working in terms of, you know, trying to create pathways for kids, successful pathways for kids. I worked in the special ed department to identify the specific needs of each individual kid, to try to put them in the correct areas. CTE has always been a passion of mine, even going back to Jermaine Lawrence. It was at that point in time that I understood that, you know, education isn't a one-size-fits-all, and every kid needs perhaps a different learning environment, and every kid needs to be put in a position to be successful. And even going back to that time period, we used a lot of skill-based learning approaches, where we, you know, in math class, we created blueprints and built a shed. So understanding that, you know, not all kids are going to go to college, and that we need to create pathways to make all of our kids successful. So when the job at Minuteman opened up, it was a natural fit for me because that was my passion. You know, I look at NTC here at South, it is the hidden gem of our district, it really is. And I'm excited about the opportunity, you know, to really show it off and to get more exposure. In terms of CTE, I've, you know, continued to work through CTE even at Nashua South. In my role as head teacher, I, one of our projects in economics is called the career research paper, and I work with the CTE department on a software called Virtual Job Shadow, where we had ninety percent of our sophomores go through this program, and the program identified possible careers, they did all kinds of inventories, there were videos on all different types of jobs that these kids could pursue. And the other really cool part of it is it identified possible CTE areas of interest, which would be great information down the road, especially for our younger kids of, you know, different pathways. And that was always exciting to me, and I decided to join that program because of my passion for CTE, because I understand that different kids need different pathways. I also, recently, last month, I worked in a program where we had about a hundred kids from Fairgrounds come to South. Originally, it started as an economics program, where we were going to have them work with the credit union on a, you know, on some basic banking. And we had so many kids sign up, what we decided to do was split them in half. So half of the kids went through the credit union program, and then the other half got to tour our programs at NTC. And that was a phenomenal experience, to be able to go on tours with the teachers and the kids, and the kids wide-eyed as they walked through HVAC, this is here, we have this here, and even the teachers not, you know, and that's why I call it the hidden gem. And I love to see more of that work, getting the middle school kids up here to understand, you know, all the wonderful opportunities we have here.
Thank you, Ms. Holhensy.
Okay. So on your resume, you're not, do you have a letter of eligibility for CTE that you're going to work on because I don't see, because you don't have the strong background? So you feel that you can take on the role and bring up, come up to speed?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Kaufman?
My question is more to the administration. The position that's on the agenda here is for co-director at South. So I know we funded, we're replacing Ms. Dustin, is what I thought this position was. So I don't understand, maybe Ms. O'Garret can explain how this is a co-director position and not the actual replacement for Ms. Dustin, which was director at CTE South, for the CTE South program.
Mr. McCoklin is the direct replacement for Mary Ann Bastide. We have, we call-
Ann Bastide?
Sorry.
Dustin?
Dustin, too many Maryans. They're just co-directors because they're supposed to work together, North and South.
Okay. Okay, all right. So it's a direct replacement?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, Ms. Alden?
Welcome. Welcome, and hope to see you July 30th at your summer graduation.
Yes, thank you.
It's obvious you have a passion for the CTE program. When you look at the program, you've been in Nashua High South for many years. What's the one thing you've thought about, boy, if I had some influence in that program, I'd love to, what?
Great, yeah, two things kind of mind right away. First of all, we're doing some great work already, and I think it's just a matter of, you know, looking at what we've already done and trying to make it better. You know, we have a great staff and a lot of great programs. But two things jumped to mind. Number one would be to increase exposure, you know, through marketing techniques, as I said, tours, I think the vertical work with the middle schools, I think we can't get those kids out of there soon enough to see the different programs we have and the different opportunities that we have available. I think that would be number one. And then number two, given my academic core background, I would like to integrate ELA mathematics into our CTE, NTC programs. And that was some of the work that we did at Minuteman, incorporating those and creating courses that were related to CTE.
Oh, okay, thank you. For me, I've always thought getting down into the middle school to get those kids to have an interest, to want to come up to the high school and get into some of those programs, I think that's critical for many of our students. Thank you.
Ms. Porter?
Welcome.
Thank you.
And I know when I was on the team interviewing you, I was very impressed. I think you have a wealth of experiences and background to bring here. And I know we spoke even of going down possibly to fifth grade to let kids even in fifth grade see what they could be doing. I think that would be important, too. I think that that whole vertical piece is very important, and I'm really glad that you think so.
I agree.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? If not, I move to accept Mr. McCoklin for CTE co-director at Nashua High School South.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Been passed. Go on. Okay, we're going to move forward on the agenda, personal recommendation. You've got a revised copy dated July 16, 2018. Did everyone get that one? Not the one that was in the package on Friday, but the one we just passed out tonight. Okay, are there any questions we got in the personal recommendations? Okay, Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. I don't know if it's been corrected in the updated, the revised, it looks like it may be. I just wanted to point out that there were several recommendations in the original document we received that did not have effective dates. Have they been corrected?
Yes, they have.
On the handout?
Yes.
And I do have one question for Ms. O'Garret. Assuming these get approved tonight, which I expect they will, how many openings do we currently have after these are accepted?
I don't, I haven't updated my numbers from, for this agenda, but when we had the meeting on Monday, June 25th, we had twenty-two retirements, one and a half reduction in force, thirty-five resignations, and eight leaves of absence for a total of sixty-six and a half positions.
Follow-up, if I may?
Yes.
And that's only teachers, it's not administrators.
Gotcha. So you mentioned there were one and a half reduction in force. I was under the impression that we had no reductions in force.
We always have, especially at the high school level. So one of those, I believe, is a grant that we, we had to, we don't know if we have the money for next year. Another one is a half-time teacher at the high school. We generally have those kinds of things happen because at the high schools, it's very much driven by enrollments.
So that's not a decision you can make in April when we're doing the budgeting?
We did make that decision in April. We have to give everybody, whether it's a, we give everybody notice by a certain date, by state statute.
So my, what I'm struggling with then is I don't recall during the budget process being told that we had one and a half people being reffed for whatever reason. So those positions did not impact the operating budget, is that the reason?
The full-time position was grant-funded, and that's why the position, the person was reffed. And the other one was a half-time position.
Okay, so because it was funded by a grant, it's not in the operating budget, we don't need to know that?
Typically, every year, we have reductions in, when we have reduced grant funding, we reduce positions. It's not, we don't usually report that because a lot of the times, it comes back, especially with Title I. We don't always know how many, how much Title I funds that we're going to have, so sometimes we play it safe and we reff, and then we bring people back.
Okay, just in general, so because it's grant, and in this instance, Title I, because it's not in the operating budget, we wouldn't see it, and because it's, like you say, it's fluid. They don't give the money until, what, September or October? I mean, it comes kind of late to when we would want it.
I'm not involved in that process, but yeah, sometimes I'm getting, you know, information in August that, you know, we got the money, so we can now go ahead and post that position.
Thank you.
Ms. Van Trever?
Thank you. I have two questions. I was looking through these sheets and- I was looking through this, these sheets and under the HQT, highly qualified teacher status. Sometimes they're checked and sometimes they are not. Well, I'm looking at the school psychologist district-wide, there's nothing checked there. I don't understand if there's supposed to be-
There's no, there's the hot, HQT, right. They're not teaching core academic subject areas, okay? That's what HQT is about, social studies. And it listed at the bottom of the page, and school psych, speech-language pathologists, nurses, even some of the other teachers don't need, actually, HQT has gone away.
Oh, it has?
Yep.
Oh, so you can take this off the form then, huh?
I was going to ask if you were all okay with it?
Well, then I have another question about the past praxis or equivalent as opposed to holding a New Hampshire certification. What's the difference between those two?
Okay, so the Department of Ed, and they had foresight, knowing that highly qualified teacher was going to turn into the new ESSA, which is highly, who has, what is it, highly? It's not highly qualified teacher anymore. So what they did is they started building the content exam, which is Praxis II. It's New Hampshire's equivalent of the MTELS, right? They started building it into a requirement for the certification. So it used to be that when the colleges graduated elementary ed candidates, they didn't, they, to get HQT, they had to do that on their own, separate. And now it's part of you, we are not going to issue your certification unless you've passed the Praxis II. It's part of their program now. And they worked that in with all the content areas.
Okay. So who decided that this section ought to go away? The state?
Nobody has decided, what, that HQT should go away? That's the state.
The state?
Yep.
They don't think it's important to have highly qualified teachers anymore?
They have new regulations under ESSA, which talks about it. But they, they, they did that, because for the most part, they've incorporated that highly qualified component into the secondary ed programs, the colleges and the universities.
Okay.
So they were able to-
So they're assuming that every teacher that comes out of the education schools are highly qualified already?
If they're part of the New Hampshire program, if they're accredited at school by the New Hampshire Department of Ed, to be a teaching school, Plymouth State, Keene State, UNH, they all have to follow the competencies for that, for that teaching area. So they all have to comply.
Okay. My second question is, are we any closer to hiring some data analysts?
We are going to begin the search for a data analyst. We have a posting and we will be interviewing soon.
But we've had that posted for a while, have we not?
We have.
And there have been no?
We had a final, we had a candidate that fell through.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Ms. Van Vriever?
Nope.
Ms. Oda?
Thank you. I had a question. HQT, paras used to be, have to be certified, HQT?
Para, surprisingly so, paraeducators in Title I schools still have to be HQT.
Thank you.
If we don't have any other questions, can we accept the personal recommendation? I move to, to accept the personal recommendation.
Okay, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Okay. That's been approved. The personal recommendation will be forward to the board, full board tonight. I have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
May adjourn at 7:30, 6:30.